Mr. Carter, did you, you had a recommendation to move up the discussion of the Broadbank Committee and the Railroad Task Force?
Yeah, during the work session, we could please, I'd appreciate that. The other thing, that's on the work session. The other thing too is, I know Mr. Daley had requested that we give him the list of our top candidates for that job, and I don't know if we, my suggestion was, he's put together a spreadsheet, he can give that out tonight. That way, we can review it, and maybe there's somebody that Ms. Colors saw that I'd maybe taken another look at, maybe somebody I put on there that maybe she wanted to take another look at, and I just don't know how long it's going to go tonight. But my suggestion would be, on next Tuesday, we have a regular meeting, then we meet at 6:00, because at least we'll be fresh, because I don't know, probably another be, be another long meeting, and that's okay. But at least, I think while we're fresh, and when you think about it and stuff like that, we can decide then who we want to bring in for interviews. If that would be acceptable to the rest of the board, if that makes sense.
6 o'clock next, 6 o'clock next Tuesday instead of 7 o'clock normal?
Well, yeah, and the 6 o'clock would more or less be like a work session type of thing, to just do interviews. And that way, we've got a little bit of a time limit in there, because I don't really want to discuss this, I don't know how long the meeting's going to go next week, I know what's on the agenda, but I don't think it's a good idea to start discussing this at 10, 10:30, or whatever. I think we need to be fresh, because this is probably the most important decision that this board makes for the upcoming years. So if that's okay, we'll push that back. Mr. Daley can hand out our email, his spreadsheet, tonight, or tomorrow, whenever, if that works.
Yes, I will email them to you tomorrow. And we're going to put this, that 6 o'clock is a work session, and the regular meeting is 7 o'clock.
Correct.
Doesn't it, it has to be a closed session, because we're talking about personnel matters, correct?
Right, right.
It should be.
Yes.
It doesn't have to be, it's, it should be.
I think it should be.
Oh, I definitely agree.
Yes.
So we can do a closed, or a closed work session if need be. All you have to do is advertise.
Mr. Fox, can, is that okay with you? Mrs. Colors?
Fine.
Mrs. Oats?
It's fine with me.
Thank you. The other question, go ahead. No, 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 go ahead.
Go ahead. I'll come back.
You call me a goat head, twice. But, but the other thing too, on item D, we also have, I'm assuming, Mr. Hamm, we have a closed session on that same item, so I guess we want to defer that till after the closed session, is that correct?
I, well, I would like to, probably, I will recommend that when we get to it, that you table D and E based on new information.
Is your microphone on?
Pardon?
Is your microphone on?
Well, the green light is on, I don't know if that, if it's on, however.
Okay, all right, I hear you better now, that's fine. Okay, so we get to item D, we table, and then we go to a closed session, and then we come back and take action if need be, correct?
I'm not sure you'll be able, it'll be fruitful taking action on D or E tonight.
Okay.
And I'm happy to talk about that now, or when we get to those items.
Okay.
That's okay. But we still need to do item L before we go into closing.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Any more corrections at all before we go, Mr. Daley?
Mr. Chairman, before we begin the agenda, wanted to ask the Treasurer if she could make a little announcement for us.
Absolutely.
Can I take this off? Can I talk? Thank you.
Unless you can talk through that.
I would really be happy enough and try to talk. Okay, I'm here tonight to speak to you about the recent press releases regarding a check fraud incident with the Treasurer's Office. My office received notification from our bank's local branch, as well as the victim of the scam, about a potential fraud on one of the county's accounts. This particular account is used only by the Treasurer's Office to issue tax refunds on accounts. The fraudulent checks were being sent with a letter titled "Secret Surveyor Evaluation", and gave the following instructions to the victims. Confirm receipt of the package by email or text. Confirmation should include the amount that was received, the bank name on the check, the victim's phone number, and estimation time to complete the evaluation. The fraudulent checks needed to be deposited by ATM, mobile, or bank deposits, and completed, and completing the assignment within 24 to 48 hours means they got more of a bonus. Once the fraudulent checks were deposited, the victim was to deduct a portion of the funds to keep for themselves, and then purchase eBay gift cards at two different locations with the remaining funds. After the gift cards were purchased, the victim was to provide the store name, the store address, the name of the cashier, the date and the time of the visit, their overall experience of the purchase, and a front and back copy of the card. The scammers were adamant about sending the information by text. As of today, there haven't been any local recipients, and there has been no money lost due to these fraudulent checks. The entire purpose of the release was to provide transparency and awareness to the community. I want to thank the Sheriff's Office for handling the press release, and to let the community know that if they have any questions, to contact the Treasurer's Office directly. I think that's all I have, unless you guys have some questions for me.
So if it looks like a scam, it probably is?
Yes, and we'll be glad to talk to anybody if they have a question about a legitimate tax refund that we've sent. We'd rather people call than be out money. But it comes with a letter saying it's for a survey, like a smart shopper, secret shopper, I think is what the name of it is. Yeah, but again, we're very lucky that with the bank that we have and the precautions we take, we did not lose any money.
I think the lesson here is, don't buy gift cards for anybody. If they ask you to get a gift card, it's a scam.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Next on our agenda is the agreement with the Front Royal County Chamber of Commerce for the use of the federal CARES relief funds for small businesses. Mr. Hamm and Mr. Daley?
The Chamber has requested some changes to both agreements, and this is the first one that has to do with the funds to small businesses. The revised agreement is in your package. The Chamber has seen this and has agreed to it. If you all have any questions, let me know.
And the Chamber's okay with this?
Yes, according to the Chamber President, they are good with that.
Okay. Because I think this could have been wrapped up a little bit sooner, but the Chamber President, maybe, when we were talking in the CARES Act, Ms. Colors remembers, he kind of zoomed out, and he missed a lot of the discussion, which would have clarified a lot of things. So the important thing is to get this done as quickly as possible, so we can start dispersing the funds and helping out the people that really need it.
And Mr. Hamm, that's already in his hands, isn't it?
Yes, Mr. Bramble and I, the Chamber President, we got their changes, and we went back and forth and organized some things, and he had seen this on Friday. So before this went out in your agenda package, he specifically blessed it, and he had shared it with the, just having a look here as to who's actually signing it. He had shared it with Nikki Foster, the President, as well, and so Mr. Bramble told me that she was okay to sign it as well, both agreements.
Now, do we need to approve this tonight?
Yes, there's a motion in your package.
Do you want to read that?
Sure. I move that the Board of Supervisors of Warren County authorize the execution, delivery, and performance of the agreement with the Chamber of Commerce of Front Royal in Warren County for the use of federal CARES Act coronavirus relief funds, the business grant agreement, and approve a modification to the prior appropriations to the Chamber to allow 200,000 of the funds to be distributed to the Chamber upon signing the business grant agreement.
Second?
Any additional comments, concerns, questions?
Just one thing, and I think I understand it, in Mr. Hamm or Mrs. Farrell, it says 200,000. That's the first go-round. Once that's depleted, there's another amount of money. I just want to make that clear. We're not limited to 200,000, but it's going to be additional amount.
Based on the pillar, tower, pot, or whatever, so, okay, I just want to make that clear.
Juan, I think it should be clarified that the $200,000 is not to the Chamber, it's for the Chamber to disperse to CARES Act recipients. So I think that that clarification should be made as well.
Correct.
Right.
But the agreement states who they can give it to, and they can only provide money to entities that have been approved by the Warren County CARES Act Committee that you all appointed for the last meeting.
And this is pretty much the first round of money? Or it's all kind of the same, you have a second round too?
This is all put together. So all put together at this point.
And the other thing I'd like, and I talked to Mr. Farrell, or emailed him, I think another entity out there that is deserving too, that, and that's the nonprofits, and we can look at that at the second go-round. I think the town based their distribution on having a business license, and most of the nonprofits do not have business licenses. So, and most of nonprofits are probably located in the town of Front Royal. So that's something we need to coordinate with the town, and take that into account for the second round, and then set aside a certain amount of money for them too, because they're hurting as well, and they provide a tremendous service, and they also save us money in the long run by taking care of things that otherwise would probably go to the DSS. No offense.
Mr. Farrell and I, I should have been already been talking about that.
Good.
Mr. Daley's been talking with us as well.
Good, good, thank you.
I think we're on target there.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that.
Mrs. Sharaki?
So there, I mean, the motion, Tony seconded it, so we just need to vote.
And Mrs. Sharaki, could we get a roll call on this, please?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is the agreement with Front Royal Warren County Chamber of Commerce for the use of federal CARES coronavirus relief funds for individual assistance with utility payments. Mr. Hamm and Mr. Daley, again?
Again, per my prior comments, the Chamber has seen this agreement as well, and has agreed to it. It has a similar provision for seed money, obviously less, because there's 413,000 total to be distributed under this for folks that are having trouble with their utility bills, and this provides for $50,000 at seed money.
Any questions for Mr. Hamm?
So these folks are going to be identified by the Department of Social Services, they will make recommendations, they'll apply to the CARES Act funds, and then be reimbursed or given the funds after that transaction is complete, correct?
The, yeah, DSS is involved in this, the ultimate body that decides is the CARES Act Committee.
Right.
And I understand that there are various members on the CARES Act Committee that are actually DSS members as well.
These will, applications will go through the Chamber, and they will go to DSS from the Chamber. And then, if they are eligible, which will be determined over at DSS, they will send it back to the Chamber, and the Chamber will then write the check for the amount designated. And we will use the 50,000 as the seed money for reimbursing them as they go.
Erica?
Yeah, because DSS is basically vetting the recipients.
Yes.
And we looked at this nine weeks to Sunday, and we cannot give it directly to the utility, we have to give it to the individual.
Correct.
And I know the Chamber had a little bit of concern about giving it to the individual, and maybe they don't put it towards utility bill. I think 95% of the people will. But the main thing we need to do, and I know Mr. Hamm will agree, we just need to make sure we comply with the protocol of the CARES Act. If we do that, we're okay. We want to help people, and again, it's going to be up to DSS to make sure it's properly distributed. And I don't know if we want to add to the motion or not, that if it's not properly distributed, we hold Beth responsible.
The CARES Act is the, is the entity that, under the agreement, that provides the approval, but it goes through DSS as well.
Right, and they'll be the ones vetting it, so.
So, yes, and that's all really I have to say about it.
No, that's it. I mean, that, you know, like I said, the Chamber had a little bit of heartburn, but I think it's been clarified, rectified, and just like I said, let's move forward and help the people we need to help.
Since you're holding her responsible for this, sir, we'll get to our new director in a bit, but he's going to be taking over the agency, administering that, and she's going to focus the next couple of weeks on the CARES Act for us.
Okay, very good, we appreciate that.
All that being said, do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Supervisors of Warren County authorize the execution, delivery, and performance of the agreement with the Chamber of Commerce of Front Royal in Warren County for the use of federal CARES Act coronavirus relief funds in order to provide utility funds to those in need and whom have been affected by the pandemic, the utilities grant agreement, and approve a modification to the prior appropriations to the Chamber to allow $50,000 of the funds to be distributed to the Chamber upon signing the utilities grant agreement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any additional concerns?
Just again, the same thing as the other agreement with the Chamber, that 50,000 is the initial amount, there's, I think, I want to say maybe 120 total, somewhere along that. So once that's dispersed, there's other monies that'll be dispersed for other recipients.
Yeah, it's 413,020 total, so the $50,000 is, you know, the Chamber doesn't have a bunch of money in the bank where they can send it out to people and then come back with receipts and return checks, so they need that to start the process.
Very good.
Any additional questions? Roll call, please, Mr. Sharaki?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number D is the agreement with the Town of Front Royal for the use of federal CARES coronavirus relief funds. Mr. Hamm?
So we have had two telephone conferences with town staff. Mr. Daley and I were on the phone with Matt Tidrick, Doug Napier, George Sonnet, and a few other people from the town. The sticking point is that the town is a condition for sign, or, we had not, I had detailed during the last meeting, our attempts to get the town to commit to what they actually wanted in an agreement. We did not have that until very recently. The town wants the money upfront without having to provide documentation, and basically wants some other changes to the agreement too. And I would like this to be postponed or tabled, and for us to discuss it tonight. Approving an agreement tonight is, it's not going to be fruitful, because there is one that's acceptable to your legal counsel, that's also acceptable to the town. But I would like to discuss this in closed session as to how to proceed.
We can discuss it in closed session, if everyone is okay with that?
It's already on there.
Yeah, so are we tabling, we're tabling this for tonight, and we're just going to discuss it in closed session? Will we come out of closed session and vote on an agreement that we agree on? Now?
Probably not, but, you know, I don't know.
So then D and E are just tabled?
I would, I would suggest a motion to table it.
All right, so I'll make the motion to table D and E until sometime in the future.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Sharaki, could we get a roll call for these two, please?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number F is 2020 Warren County Board of Supervisors meeting policies and procedures. Mr. Hamm?
So these revised policies and procedures allow for supervisors to participate remotely up to twice per year for a personal matter, if they're out of town for whatever reason, and provides a procedure for that. That's allowed by FOIA. The modifications also change the public comments period. Right now, we have two public comments periods. We have an agenda public comments period and a public comment period. And the problem with that is that we always get into this back and forth as to, and people get it wrong, as to which public comments period they're in. And so you immediately end up questioning whoever it is that wants to present about what they're talking about, which is kind of unpleasant and time-consuming. So, and it's my suggestion that we combine the two comment periods. Right now, there's 15 minutes for, 45 minutes for the agenda public presentation comment period, and 15 minutes for the general public comment period. My suggestion is to combine it, these two that add up to 60 minutes, into one 60-minute public comment period, where people can talk about whatever they want to talk about. And, you know, Mr. Chairman, you don't need to interrupt people and question them as to, you know, whether or not they're on the right part in the agenda, and that is, is a policy decision for you to make, but it would be my suggestion. And then there's a sort of ministerial change to Section 3-1 Order of Business to take into consideration the condensing of the two public comments periods, the 15 minutes and the 45 minutes into one 60-minute period. Also provides for a three-minute limit per speaker. Right now, we have a situation where the time is to be divided by the number of speakers. That's never works in practice, because people show up at the meeting that have not signed up, and of course, we want to hear from the public, and so that doesn't really work very well. And, you know, the Gettysburg Address was less than three minutes, the thought being three minutes is sufficient time for most people to make their, their point.
Any questions for Mr. Hamm?
Mr. Hamm, if we have, so what you're saying is, if we have a 60-minute time period, and there's three minutes per speaker, that gives you 20 speakers.
Yes.
Should we have 30 people sign up? Would we be able to shorten the length of time that they speak to make sure that this stays within a 60-minute timeframe?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, people fall into two categories. They either talk for less than a minute, or they talk until they are asked not to. So I actually think that it's not going to be three minutes times 20 people. I think it's going to be much more than 20 people, and I think in most circumstances, this is going to get the job done. If it doesn't, the board can always vote to change its rules, or the chairman always has some discretion to allow those to speak, and I know, you know, our chairman does that routinely. So I would expect that this would work in most circumstances. It's hard to draft rules that fit every circumstance, and we can always modify the rules if we need to.
Thank you.
Well, I think the other thing too is, to keep in mind, because, you know, usually the biggest discussion we have is regarding the budget, and that's usually a public hearing. So these rules would not apply to that anyway, so we should be okay on that. The only concern I have, and I support these changes, the only concern that I have is, I don't know, the daytime meetings, we have reports from different organizations, DSS, the school, or whatever, so maybe, and maybe it's in here, but maybe bump that up before the actual committee reports and let people speak. And I think it's good to let people speak beforehand, so they don't have to stay till the end and get somewhat frustrated. So that may be, that may be the order of business that we have, and I'll have to go back, let's see. Yeah, you do have that public comment period before the, well?
It is on there, before the reports, and I brought that up at the last meeting, and I know we, we discussed it. I didn't know if, by it not being changed here, if that was just going to be something that the chairman would do on that morning meeting, on the days we have reports.
Right.
Not every morning meeting, there are reports from the different, VDOT is usually here, the first meeting of the month, so, you know, it is.
Well, we can make that change on the clock.
Right, yeah.
Well, we, we could do it right now. Mr. Carter, are you only wanting to do that with respect to the morning meetings, or both?
I think we have most of the reports, whether it's EDA, whether it's school, whether it's DSS, the Extension Office, whatever, they're usually in the, in the morning meetings. So I would almost, and they're going to see the agenda, see the 3:00 to 7:00 PM at 9:00 AM. And actually, it doesn't really say, I guess it's page four, Call to Order, Pledge, Adoption of Agenda, this is public comment period. But it really doesn't say anything there about reports from outside agencies, it just goes to our reports. So probably, if we left it like it is, we'd have a public comment period as item C, and then we have reports from the outside agencies just to follow that before that. So we probably really don't really, we probably don't really need to make any change there. I think we would probably be okay. And the only other concern I have is on the evening meetings, if, if we start, best-case scenario, we start at 7:10 with public presentations, and we go for an hour, that's going to push back the public hearings. Now, they start, they cannot start before 7:30, but they can always start later, and if somebody's there, and we started at 7:15, it means the public hearing doesn't start until late 15. The only concern I have there too is that sometimes we have applicants here with their engineer, their architect, outside people who are charging them, who knows, 150, 200 bucks an hour just to sit there and listen to these other things. But I think we're better off letting the public speak, and if we have to, we push it back. And again, there may be situations where we don't even have much public comment, and we can still start the public hearings in a timely fashion, so.
Well, I'll make a suggestion. If you're interested in the public hearing starting on time, then make it item C in both the morning and the afternoon and the evening meeting. I mean, that's the way to guarantee that the public hearing starts, because the Call to Order and Adoption of Agenda takes two minutes. That's the way to guarantee that, if that's a policy concern.
So what you're asking to do is just switch, switch the process and put the reports prior to any of the public comment period?
Well, I think we're off the reports now. Mr. Chairman, I think we're just talking about the public hearings, and, you know, Mr. Carter's point is, you've got lawyers and engineers and expensive people here.
Okay, I see.
And typically, you know, the, Mr. Chairman, you allow, change the order of the meeting to accommodate that, you know, and if that is a policy concern of the board, you can alleviate that by making item H in, in the morning meeting, and item J in the evening meeting, item C in both, and then that guarantees that it will start on time, if that's something that you want to do. And you can do that tonight if you want to, or not?
Well, normally, we don't have many public hearings during the daytime meeting anyway, so it's almost a moot point.
Well, we'd have to change it up to 7:00.
And the only concern would be with the public hearings at 7:30, again, I think it's important to allow the public to speak at the beginning of the meeting, because I think it was, what, last meeting, where we had like 57 public hearings, I think? So by the time all those get finished, it may be 9:00, 9:30, and again, I think people want to go ahead and, and express their concerns, other than stay here for two and a half, three hours and do that. So we're probably okay leaving it as it is, and just be attuned to if people are there with their attorneys, architects, whatever, so I'm just bringing it out for consideration. But I think we're probably okay just leaving it as it is and see how it works. We can always change it later, if that makes sense.
It seems like to me I'd rather change it now. I mean, bring the public hearings up, like you said, to, to item C.
I think that, but then the public hearing will be too early, so you're.
Well, no, the public hearing doesn't start before 7:30.
Right, but if you make it item C on here, it's going to be earlier than 7:30.
It cannot be earlier than 7:30.
You could change the time if you, if you wanted to do that. And I think Mr. Daley has some things to say about this.
Okay.
Okay, let's go.
I believe the agenda is as you have it written here, and when the chairman determines that it's 7:30 and we need to move into the public hearings, we move up into them when necessary, and on other days when we are moving along and about to close out the public comments section, we can go ahead and do that.
Just making it consistent is what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
But the last two times that we did it, that's what we did. When it came around to 7:30 or closer, we moved it up.
Because you can suspend the public comment period.
Exactly.
And go right to that, and if it's like only three or more people, we always give them an additional 10, 15 minutes and finish up, and I don't think it would be too much of a burden on the folks on the public hearing side.
Okay, so consensus is just leave it the way it is?
How do I get?
Any additional concerns? Thank you.
I'm passing down something, I think I've given it to. I'm passing down something, I think I've given it to, um, I'm okay going forward with this, but the other thing to consider, and I don't know, I think this is germane somewhat, uh, cause it came up, I think, in twenty-eighteen. And I know, I think Mr. Ham will agree that our rules are our rules, but they're not superseded by the ordinance itself. The ordinance takes precedence. And I gave you a copy that we talked about. And what this basically says, any orderly person present at the meeting of the board supervisors may, upon recognition of the presiding officer, request permission to address the board. And the presiding officer may grant such request if he considers to be in the public interest, and he shall grant such request upon demand of any two supervisors. And this came out, back in nineteen-seventy-five, I think, before they actually had public comment, uh, item on the, on the agenda. And they, they, at that time, there was somebody had a zoning issue and he wasn't allowed to speak, so that's when they adopted this, like I said, nineteen-seventy-five or whatever. But to me, this here would take precedence. So even with the rules we have, if two members said, "We want to hear and let this person speak," we would have to allow that. And we wouldn't really have any time limit. So my suggest, and I think the rules we have are a lot more lenient than what we have right now, cause it allows anybody to speak without having to have two people. So just for consideration in the future, because I know we don't have much else to talk about, uh, we can, we might want to think about changing this ordinance and maybe codify our ordinance to reflect our rules, if that makes sense in the future. I don't think it has to be any, well, you can discuss it right now, but since I just kind of sprung it on you, you know, I apologize for the last minute, but this is just something that came up in twenty-eighteen by, uh, another gentleman who came before us, uh, and, and he cited this, uh, uh, ordinance. So that's something we might want to think about changing, um, but, so I just wanted to bring it up to your attention for tonight, just for future consideration.
I have recommended that six, fifty-six dash three be abolished because it definitely is inconsistent with our, what our rules are. I appreciated it bringing, I appreciated you bringing it to my attention and I have given that opinion that I, I think it would be best if it was gone.
And that's something we've talked about in a future work session, perhaps. I don't know, are we going to have any more work sessions? No, I'm not sure. Other than that, I will, uh, make the motion, I move that the board supervisor adopt the meeting policy and procedures as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Mr. Shirock, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Now, going into closed session, does someone want to raise a?
Yep, I will do this. Um, I move the board intern to a closed meeting under the provisions of section two-dot-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-eight of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for consultation with legal counsel for the provision of legal advice regarding the Towns Cares Act agreement.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, because can we also, can we add to that and the release of liability regarding IT services?
Okay, and the release of liability, um, regarding IT services.
Can I ask a question? Do we know about how long, I'm just thinking, the people that are sitting out here to discuss the work session part, would it be better to do that first, to, to keep from holding them up first and then go closed session?
I don't expect to, I'm not going to talk for more than five minutes. I don't know how long you guys need to.
Another thing too, this is part of the regular meeting.
It is.
So I, I appreciate that. And I know they appreciate it.
I try to.
But there again, I think we can probably do fairly quickly. So you hit the motion, do you have a second?
Um, yeah, we need a second.
We, we have, we need, are in need of a second.
I'll second.
Any additional discussion?
Just one, maybe, and I don't know if we were prepared to discuss this tonight or not, but it's still EDA, town-related, and maybe this covers it. But as far as the settlement agreement that we looked at before, is that, would that be covered under this?
No. You know, I, I don't have anything else to report since we last spoke, but, uh, it's not part of our current closed session motion.
Could that be added as far as a brief discussion on it?
If you like.
I would like, what do we have to do?
Okay. I move the board enter into a closed meeting to discuss everything with respect to the town.
I don't think, I don't think that works so.
Oh, well, yeah. I thought I'd make it easier.
Good try.
I think we need a, a, a couple of minute recess to get the language that we used last time to go into the closed session with the town. I wonder if I can ask our, our deputy clerk to, uh, pull up the last closed session motion that we did at the last meeting.
I think that was on the first, our last meeting, I think. Didn't mean to make it complicated, I just think it's something maybe we need to discuss briefly and see where we are on that. It can be.
Five minutes just turned into a little bit longer.
Well, you, from my perspective, you turned it into ten, but I don't know how long you guys want to talk about.
Mr. Ham, is this the motion for A-seven and A-eight, consultation with legal counsel for pertaining to actual probable litigation and then regarding the town of Front Royal and is this?
Give me a second here.
Government in motion.
Yeah, so I would ask, um, Mrs. Oats, if you would amend your motion to include that the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of sections two-point-two, thirty-seven-eleven, A-seven and A-eight of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation and the provision of legal advice regarding the industrial development authority of the town of Front Royal and the county of Warren, Virginia, the EDA. The town of Front Royal, the EDA versus Jennifer McDonald et al., the town of Front Royal versus the EDA et al., and other potential claims and litigation related to other possible liabilities of the EDA and the recovery of EDA funds and assets.
What do you say?
I make the motion as to, yeah, I'll make, all right, um, I move the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of section two-dot-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-seven and eight, right, of the Freedom of Information Act for consultation with legal counsel for the provision of legal advice regarding the Towns Cares Act agreement and release of liability, um, for, uh, providing information technology services, and then what you said.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Any additional discussion? Mrs. Shirock, you can roll, roll call, please.
Mr. Carter?
Who?
You.
Oh.
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
We've decided that we were going to move E up to A and discuss the broadband committees and the railroad transfer, uh, task force bylaws.
And Mr. Chairman, I have the most updated version of the railroad task force bylaws with edits from Dr. Daley, yourself, and Mr. Carter.
Did you want to talk about the broadband first?
Oh, sorry.
You waving again or?
Everybody's leaving me over here.
Yeah, can we do the broadband first, that's the longest?
I think broadband looks pretty good. I like the idea of having, um, of having the citizens involved in it, especially that one gentleman was here, I think from Ms. Colors' district. He seemed to be very knowledgeable. And I think if, hmm?
Can you say that again? I was trying to figure out why I'm getting all these papers and.
Cause this is an update on the railroad task force. But anyway, no, we were talking about the broadband, I said, I think, I think the broadband agreement looks pretty good. And I like the, the tact that you're taking on that because I think it's important to have a citizen from each district on there. And the gentleman that spoke here one day, I think from your district, he seemed very knowledgeable and I imagine you're going to put him on there. And I've been trying to find people too, but I think that would be good since broadband is an issue in all districts, some more than others, uh, probably especially out your way, um, as far as having access to that. And depending, I think it's very important with the, uh, schools, um, depending on what happens, to have access to that. So like I said, that gentleman you had, I hope you want to put him on there, cause he seemed really knowledgeable.
Since, since this is something I'm new with, can, how, how are citizen appointees usually done? Do we open it up and people apply? That was in, and we as a group? Okay, I think that would be the best way then to do it. And, and I hope he does apply, but does it not show a special interest of any one person?
Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt. But like I say, in the, um, since we have it set in there, and we have some committees where we have one member from each district, planning commission, I think maybe we try BCA, we try the Board of Zoning Appeal, well, it's the same thing, but, uh, the Builders' Committee, we try to get somebody from each, uh, district at all possible. But yeah, I would, I would think that's a good idea to go ahead and put it out. And I guess we can put it online and advertise or whatever. And I don't know if you want to set a kind of a deadline, do you have an idea of when you want to get this committee up and running?
I think the, the sooner the better as far as between the VATTI grants and, and whatever else, to get in on it as quickly as we can. So she works all you do.
Would it be possible to be prepared maybe your first meeting in October? Cause I know we got a meeting next week and I don't know if we've got another work session before then, but then we get everybody maybe three weeks to apply. And of course, I would also suggest, you know, not only put the application process online in the paper, but then also go out and try to find people too, which you may think is good. But we could start, may, maybe be, uh, ready to adopt whatever that date is in October, the first meeting, is that, does that make sense?
What we would propose for you sirs, if these bylaws are acceptable, that they be on your agenda for adoption next week. And simultaneously, we will put out the notice of the positions available so that you can then have those interested parties have, will have applied by the first of October. So that at the October meeting, then you can look at appointing people to commit.
Would that give us enough time to have a, if we have it, we're only giving them two weeks to apply and get in here and take, so we can take a look at?
Well, we could start if, if by consensus this is agreeable, we will start to advertise soliciting applications this week.
Okay, good.
So that we get that extra week of time in there and, um.
Next week, we just approve it?
Then next week you would approve this.
Okay.
And one change of the bylaws as we have here, we would like to suggest that, uh, Mr. Tim Grant be an additional advisor to the committee. He is the director of IT for the county schools. That he just be an advisory member so that he can assist you.
Question that I had, um, and maybe I overlooked it when reading this, is how often are they going to meet? Couple of questions, how often do they plan to meet and when do they report back to us, the board supervisors?
Both will be under the committee and, uh, the board liaison. Uh, we would recommend that a member of the board be appointed to the committee and that person will become the chair and then can drive the coordination between the board and the committee and make things that they're timely presentations to the board and so forth.
Okay, that sounds good.
So we would make that addition also.
I think it would be a good idea. And then I will leave it up to the committee to decide how often they want to meet and stuff like that, but I would possibly, pardon me?
First meeting, I'm sorry.
No, but yeah, the first meeting, decide how often they want to meet. And I would almost suggest maybe, since we only have one meeting in December, maybe they at least give us a preliminary report on how things are proceeding, but you know, if a member of this board's on there, and I would, uh, suggest Ms. Colors at this point, cause she doesn't have anything else to do. But, uh, but then again, in that meeting in December, which is probably going to be like the third Tuesday day meeting, that way we can get a report as far as progress and maybe just an organizational report. And in that way, we have, and then after that, maybe quarterly updates.
Staff will be here every Tuesday in December if the board wants to come.
Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't have any other questions on this at all. Mrs. Colors, I don't know if you wanted to be chair or not. I know that you originally threw your hat in the ring, I believe. I don't know what your timeframe is and if you've got the ability to.
That's fine, I don't mind and, um, be glad to do it.
I'll be happy to help you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Would it make sense to potentially have maybe one of the delegates from our area invited to participate? Because these guys are in tune with what is going on in Richmond and with respect to broadband and, and so perhaps Mike Weber or Todd Gilbert or, um, if Mr. Wiley is elected, I'm sure he'd be interested as well.
I think that would be great. The more people in positions to make a difference with moving us along, the, the better.
The only thing I would suggest on that would be not necessarily, and maybe you said advisory, but not necessarily make them a member of that committee, cause they're going to be busy as all get out anyway. But they would be a good liaison.
Right.
To the General Assembly and to keep posted on that and make it come in periodically to say, here's what they're doing, here's what they're proposing. Cause I think there's supposed to be some money available.
Yep.
For broadband in rural areas and how we go about getting that and everything.
Um, and I, I've already got some of the broadband information already from past meetings of Mr. Daley and I to, um, so we'll be able to, you know, get us up to speed relatively quickly. Now we just got to get the people involved.
Well, and if, if the delegates weren't ideal, then VACO has their own person who's also working specifically on the broadband issue.
Okay.
So perhaps that would be a better choice.
To work with Dean or do, do you know that person or should we just work with Dean?
Um, Cheryl, we, we can find out from VACO.
Jeremy, I believe.
Jeremy, I believe his name, yeah.
I think you'll find a lot of resources.
Yep, there's a lot of folks out there that are working on this.
Okay. Now that they Zoom, anybody can join your committee?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on this broadband?
Well, lots of questions, but none that. None I would go into tonight.
So that will be on the agenda next week with those couple of, of revisions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next is the bylaws for the Warren County Railroad Task Force.
The only thing I thought about on that, it's a little bit different for the broadband. And, and I think Ms. Oats has already had, had, had some conversation with the inland port. And I think the main, uh, area where we're having issues are, I think it's the boundary line, the railroad between, well, at the inland port and Fairbanks Road and Rockland Road. And I think that's the boundary between Shenandoah and North River.
It is.
And my only thought was maybe you and Mr. May could be part of that group. And I don't know, in this case, of course, the other areas you have too is, uh, along Happy Creek Road, Shandor Shores Road and, uh, Mary, Mary Shady's Lane. So that's a big problem too. And I don't think it's been quite as much of an issue out there, but the only thing that I'm aware of is that the railroads are basically going to do what the railroads want to do. When they were doing the, uh, improvements on Mary Shady's Lane, I think the only notice they gave was there's a sign saying this is going to be closed between Friday and whatever. I don't think they ever notified the county, VDOT, or EMS people or whatever. And I had a conversation with one of your constituents and, and, you know, tried to see what, uh, they could do to alleviate it. I know some years back where I live, I heard rumors that, uh, it was blocking, uh, my driveway and I happened to be on the wrong side of the driveway, so I rode down to the Apple Mountain store. Sure enough, they were stopped right there and I waited a few minutes and here comes the engineer out with a sandwich bag and a styrofoam cup. And I reported to Mr. Stanley, he talked to the railroad and, uh, he said, "Oh, we had a mechanical problem." I said, "Okay." So it was a couple of weeks later, it was Easter, I was over in Winchester visiting relatives and came back, the same thing happened. So that was the time, and I'm not too adept at that now, but I took out my handy-dandy, uh, cell phone camera and took pictures of it and actually showed it guy. So that kind of alleviated that. But I'm just thinking that, that it's, it's good to have the citizens on there, but it's more important, I think, to talk to the inland port. Right now, I think it's like a five million dollar deficit because they ran into some issues with the, uh, topography out there. But we, even we got that five million dollars tomorrow, we're still probably talking about five years before it gets built. So to me, the most important, and, and, and the history lesson, the railroads came about like in eighteen-fifties trying to. So to me, the most important, and, and the history lesson, the railroads came about like in 1850s trying to do commerce. And Congress just gave them carte blanche. They do anything, everything they want, they don't have to tell anybody. So to me, the better, better tact might be for you and Mr. May, along with maybe members of staff, to start reaching out to Ben Clyde, Senators Warner and Kane. And there, again, maybe they can find that money, which could at least expedite it. And maybe, maybe they could put some leverage on the railroads to try to work things out a little bit better. Because I just don't see where the citizens are going to have a lot of input. I mean, other than, well, they have input, you can still gather that, document the times and dates when they, they do that. But, and there may be some, the other effort would be too with maybe Delegate Weaver, Weber, and Gilbert, and Senator O'Beane, and all those. Because they may have some, some flexibility or input with the Inland Port. Because right there, that's going to be the, the main thing. So I just, this, to me, it's different for broadband where the citizens can come into discussions and all. But this here, this is going to be have to take, have to be taken on a higher level to get things accomplished. And you know, I wish you good luck.
Well, I will say that I've met with Norfolk Southern, and they've been most cooperative. We met with the Inland Port, Mr. Daley and I did, and that was very positive. So that, you know, we're hopeful that at the end of this project, there may be about a million dollars. But that should be easily, or I don't want to say easily, because a million dollars is not anything easy. But they do think that in terms of grants, that there is possibility to be able to fund the gap. The biggest issue that, that I see right now with the railroad is that we have blockages on a regular basis at Rockland, at Ashby Station, and at Fairground. And I just want to report, because this is a really good report. There was a blockage last week and constituents, and now have my cell phone number, and they're texting me, and they said, there's a blockage, it's been blocked for an hour. So I immediately called our representative at Norfolk Southern. He was back to me in 15 minutes with a report for the reason, and it was unblocked after that. So I reported back to the constituents, and they're, they're okay if there's a reason and somebody tells them what's going on. The frustration is that you're sitting there for an hour and you have no idea, and no one to call, and no way to find out the circumstances. That's what's frustrating. So I reported back to the constituents, and I would like to report that the blockages have been fewer and fewer since.
Considerably less.
Yes, considerably less since we initially spoke to them. So things are on the right path, we just need to come up with a solution. And the one person who's not on this list on these bylaws is Sheriff Butler, and he needs to be on this committee. Because he is the, the person who gets the calls most frequently at his office. So I would like to make sure that Sheriff Butler is a part of this committee.
Make him number eight.
Yeah, I've also been in contact, just by the way, with Delegate Weber, and he has been helping me with connections with Norfolk Southern and with other people within Richmond. He's been very valuable, so I'd like to add that as well.
Okay, make that known.
So you still want citizens on there? You just want to kind of make it you and Walt and Sheriff Butler? And, because it seems like you all are making some headway, and I'm pleased and impressed by that.
Yep.
But I just don't know if it would be better just for you guys to kind of do this along with input from different people?
Would it be of any value to have a certain amount of citizens as an alert that the railroad is blocked? That you're getting emails?
That's what we're working on. So right now, the biggest issue, so it's going to be five years before that flower is done. That's, that's a given. So the biggest issue within our community at this point in time is how do we notify citizens who, who, when there is a blockage? And we're talked, I've talked to them about, you know, electronic signage, Sheriff Butler, and I've talked about that. But that would only help the people on 522 who are going to make a turn onto one of these roads. The people who live there or playing golf there have no way of knowing that that railroad crossing is blocked until they get there. So we've talked about potentially an app, you know? Everybody else has apps, you get alerts from Richmond if there's a child missing, you get, or for the, you know? So could there not be some app that people could sign up for that could let them know? But those, I mean, that's a big idea, just to let you know, that's a real big idea. And we haven't talked about the details of even if that's possible yet. But those are the kinds of ideas that are floating around. So citizens' involvement could assist with the solutions. So that would be my, my, my only comment there.
So you want to put this on the second meeting, or next week, as far as the final outcome of this?
Make these adjustments and then put it on the next meeting.
Okay.
And Mrs. Oats, you're going to be the chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Oats has agreed. Mr. Daley asked me if that would be, if I would be, if I would consider that, and I said yes.
And I'll be happy to be on that with you.
Yep, glad you can be a part of it.
Mr. Butler?
I'll be one, I'll do.
All right.
Thank you. I did have a question about, why can't we put up a temporary camera that will go and feed into my dispatch? And so my dispatchers will have 24-hour coverage of the relevant tracks. Then we can get it out faster to the public by some means of signs by program. Even if we put them out, you know, it'd be a lot faster than waiting for a resident to come in, then a deputy to go and respond to it. You're talking 15, 20, 30 minutes, it's already been sitting. Where if our dispatchers see it through the camera, which a camera we can use with a cell phone, I'm saying $300 or $400 for a camera, we'll put it on hold.
Those are the kinds of solutions we need to investigate.
And you work up, well, we've already been looking into it. About nine months ago, I started looking into that. For the nice movable ones that are self-generated, obviously, that VDOT has, we're looking at spending about $40,000, $50,000 for a whole camp. We don't want to do that, I'm trying to find a less expensive stop gate for it for now. Like we look for auxiliary emergency routes. Like the Atwood Farm, the last stop is that Mr. Carter was talking about. They literally got no notification. Their driveway was blocked at 6 AM in the morning and could not get back into their home until 9 PM, because I sat there for about seven hours back and forth with it. Now that concerns me because I have many homes on Shenandoah Shore, Mary Shady Lane, and all through there that if we have rescue problems, the only way I can get in there is if I can get through the farm, Atwood's Farm, if that area is open, I'd have to cut through this farm, cut through an emergency access, cut through the other farm. There's ways, there's got to be a way we can get emergency access. Would cost much money just for now because of this overpass? It's not going to happen for five, seven years. So when someone dies, because we can't get to them, now we got a problem. And, and Mr. Carter's right. The reverends, they got all the power in the world, and we really don't have any right now.
I think that was a good point. I think those are things that Ms. Oats and Mr. May will discuss and look forward to your.
Yep.
Valuable input, so.
Yep, we, we're going to work on it.
Sounds good.
Mrs. Chiarocci, you're going to get this on air, Chairman.
Yes, with the amendments as noted.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns on this?
Mr. May, I mentioned to you before, I need to leave, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next is our introduction of the new Director for the Warren Department of Social Services and the program overall of the departments, Mr. Rivas and Mr. Mars.
I am all tangled up. Good evening, everybody. It is my pleasure to introduce you to John Mars. He is the new Director of Social Services. He comes to us from New Kent County. John went to school at Texas TCU, from my old stomping grounds. And he finished his degree at Mary Baldwin. He has been in social services for 13 years, and he's been a director for the last six years. And so we're, we're pleased, I took him around this morning, introduced him to all the staff, and they're excited about him being there, and we're excited about him being there. So I think he's going to be a great addition to the community. Want to say anything? Go ahead.
Welcome, John.
Thank you. I'm thrilled to be here. My wife's family is from Warren County. They've been here for generations, and this is an excellent opportunity for me to be able to bring her home. And I'm excited for the opportunity. I love the staff that I've met so far. I've got a wonderful staff, and I look forward to working with all of you. So, thank you. And if you ever have any questions, we're there to help.
Welcome to our committee.
Thank you.
Yes. So, Ms. Colors, you asked for an explanation about our fundings, though. I have a presentation, and Dwayne's going to put it up for me. There we go. So it's just, this is just an overview of our funding and the different funding streams that we have. I know a lot of the departments have grants, but these are, these are pretty fixed, the funding streams that we have. So from the federal government, we get about 41%. This is on our overall budget. The state revenue is about 29%, and the local match required is 30%. Next slide. And it's just a pie chart, just to kind of show you how it looks. The federal government certainly pays the, the bulk of it. And, and the state and the locality are about the same. Next slide. Where it changes is where, and I was trying to explain that the other day. Administration, the locality picks up more of the cost. And so it's about 41% federal money, state money's about 20%, and 39% is the locality. But it mostly affects the administrative costs. So the salaries, when I was talking about salaries, that's what I meant, is the state doesn't have as much of a stake in the salaries as the locality. And we're considered county employees, so it makes a difference. The departments are, was it state supervised, locally administered? So, and for every dollar spent on administration, the county receives about 60 cents in reimbursement. Which would follow along with, with increases, the reimbursement would go along with that. So you'd get, you'd get some reimbursement if you increased our salaries. Next slide. So the total amount spent on social services in the county is about $62 million, 62.1. And Warren County's share of that is $1.7 million. As a general rule, for every dollar spent locally, the locality receives about 74 cents in reimbursement. Next one. Now, this is, this is our program budget. So you're seeing the match rates. So if you look at family preservation, pop this little thing, see if it works. I'm not close enough, okay. So family preservation, in order to get that money, the locality has to put up 15.5% to get the local match in order to draw down that money from the state. Child Welfare Abuse and Support Services, 15.5% local match. Adult Services, there's a 20% local match. Safe and Stable Families, 15.5. Due Purchase of Services, that's the, Due Purchase of Services is the money that we spend on families that are trying to get off welfare and go to work. Emily's getting on me. So that's a really important part of our budget, because that's where we get people off welfare and into the workforce. So we can pay for training, we can pay for transportation, we can pay for tools, just, just about anything that furthers someone's efforts to go to work and get into the workforce and be able to be self-sufficient. Then Adult Protective Services, you've got a 15.5%. And then for, the 4E Training Grant is 43%. And that, that goes along with that they, the locality gets more administrative. Training would be an administrative cost, and that's why the, the, but it's only $800, $800. So overall, for programs, these programs that you see listed here, the match rate overall is about 4%. Yes, sir?
Is there, is that like the $800 Training Grant?
Yeah.
Is that all there is? I mean, are, is there, or can you apply for more?
You can. If we turn in our budget and we ask for $1,000 for training, we can draw down more money based on what we're budgeted for here. But the state has a very specific and frankly outdated formula for determining how much localities get reimbursed. And they are currently reviewing that, and they're looking at redoing the whole formula. The problem is, nobody who wrote it is around anymore. And so nobody knows why we have it the way we have it. They just know that that's what you do. And localities are mostly comfortable with that because they know what to expect. They know what they're going to get from year to year to year. If you start changing the formula, then you start changing the reimbursements. When you do that, you get winners and losers. And your bigger localities start drawing down more money, leaving less for your smaller localities. Our locality like Warren County, we're going to get stuck in the middle. We're not big, we're not small. And so there's a chance that we could start losing some of the reimbursement from the state as they start changing the formula. So we need to be very sure that we're advocating, and VACO is a very good organization to be advocating for that, because you want to make sure that the reimbursement that your localities are getting remains consistent. It's, you know very well, it's so hard to budget if you don't know what your budget's going to be. If you don't know what the bottom line is, you don't know what to allocate for what programs. And so, yeah, we could tweak here and there and move one budget line to the next and ask for more in this budget line and less in that budget line. But the overall amount we get from the state remains fairly consistent as long as the formula that you're using remains consistent. That kind of sort of answered your question?
Yeah, it kind of does, but I'm still confused. If you, if you see a need and you want to go from $1,800 to $8,000, is there a possibility of that happening? I, I mean, maybe that's way out of the realm of things, but if you know that there's a problem.
Yes.
And you want to help solve it, asking for money should not be an issue. But it sounds like to me that it is.
It is, because we can allocate more money to that budget line, but we really have to take it and move it from another budget line into that. Because the amount you're going to get from the state is going to be fairly consistent.
Okay.
We can move it around, but we're not going to get that state, federal share necessarily.
Do you use every dollar that you get from your grants?
Generally, yes, sir.
This $800, is that $800 to train for a full year for your entire staff?
No, ma'am, that's, that's a specific training line for 4E funding. 4E funding is basically foster, foster parents?
Total 4E is federal reimbursement for foster care. If you have kids coming into foster care, you want to get them, if at all possible, qualified for 4E funding because you get 100% reimbursement rate from the federal government. And 4E really depends on the family circumstances the six months prior to when the child comes into foster care. That's an eligibility question.
So you really jumped on one that opened up a can of worms for us.
Yeah, but you want to make sure that you're training your staff to properly pursue the 4E. Because if you declare somebody's 4E eligible and they're not, you're going to have to repay that money.
Well, I, I just thought that was totally unrealistic.
That's not, that's just the 4E budget. And the, and you know, from CPMT, you know, we try to determine 4E eligibility first because that's 100% federal money, and then we use the CSA funds. And then if neither one of those pots can be used, then we have to use sometimes local only money. But that's rare.
Who determines the formula? Who makes up the formula that you go by?
The last person I knew at the state level who knew what the formula was was J.R. Simpson. He was one of the.
Finance directors.
Yeah. Chief Financial Director of Social Services. He retired a couple of years ago, and the formula is still in place. But now they just plug the numbers in. They had a lot of turnover at the state level. Mike Gump, who was also in charge of finances at the state, he retired last year as well. So now we have new people in these places. And the State Board of Social. And the State Board of Social Services is starting to look at, okay, why do we do the things that we do? Why, is just because we've always done it that way, does that mean it's right? But nobody really has an answer. I, I ask the commissioner all the time, I said, who came up with these numbers and why are we using these numbers? Well, nobody can answer that question. You often get the answer, it's complicated. Well, yeah, it is. It's very complicated. But, you know, we have to advocate to make sure that we're getting the fair share for Warren County.
Yeah, and that's, that was the question. Thank you.
Yep.
And Johnsberry spends a lot of time with the League of Social Services executives and those are the people the state goes to, to find out what's going on in the localities. So, they have personnel committees and, and just recently, they changed one of the rules in the personnel committee to allow us to hire social workers that have an education degree. Before, we couldn't, we couldn't hire teachers, which was ridiculous because they have a wonderful background, working with children, which is what most of our social workers do. And it's, we had to exclude them. We had to screen them out. Now, they've allowed us to use education degrees as, as part of the mandate, of the kind of degrees that you have to have to become a social worker. So, that opened up a whole new avenue for us because sometimes we, we get two or three applications for our positions. And so, we don't have a huge pool. So, when you exclude a whole bunch of people that live here locally, who maybe don't wanna be in the classroom anymore, that really limits the pool that we can draw from. And since the other localities around us pay more, we're oftentimes, you know, the training ground. So, we hire them, it takes about a year for a social worker to get all the training that they need and then they go to Frederick County and Winchester.
So, in order, if, if I were a teacher and I wanted to change, to go into social, I could apply and I would get on the job training for the social work part-
Yes, ma'am.
-without having to go to college and get a degree in that.
It's, we look for human services degrees now. It's not necessarily a social work degree. So, a lot of things, psychology degrees, sociology degrees. The state is expanding the pool a little bit more. And I think the next slide really kinda illustrates what we're up against when we are looking to bring in services workers.
One more. There you go. That was a comparison I was, I was talking to you about the last time I came before you.
And these are Warren County-
These are Warren County numbers.
So, you know-
And that's a start, that sixty-six five's a starting salary in the schools. And they do the same job that my girls do, my ladies and gentlemen, cause we have, we have hired some men lately. So, same degree requirements. My staff has to do on-call, which is every night and all weekend and all holidays. And the school social workers don't have to do that and they work fewer days than, than my folks do also. So, it's, it's just really hard. They are working so hard. We were, we were talking to them today. They are so stressed. One of my CPS workers has forty investigations open, forty. She's only been there a year and she is overwhelmed. So, we, we, you know, we gotta figure out what to do and how to make, hire more people. We've got an advertisement out right now for three people. Somebody coming on in mid-month that has some experience, which is great. But, and we've got three positions, we've got advertised now and we're waiting on applications for those to come in. But it's a, it's a, it's a constant change. And I know Sheriff has it, Fire and Rescue has it. It's, it's just, it's just a problem, but-
Can you tell me what the, I apologize, were you-
I was just gonna ask a question, but you go ahead.
What is the, the breakdown between that thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars of what is compensated by the locality us and either, is it just states or, you said state and federal pays towards, or just does the state and the locality pay towards their salary?
If you look back to the, one of the earlier slides, we're talking about the administration, that's where our staff and operations comes out of. So, you're getting about sixty cents back on the dollar. So, that thirty-seven thousand dollars, almost two-thirds of it technically is money that's coming from the state. However, because we're state-supervised, locally administered, Warren County cuts the check and pays that thirty-seven thousand dollars and then you get reimbursed on the back end, about sixty percent of that.
So, the issue becomes, ma'am, is the fact that the state has a cap on what we're gonna get. And we can have ten more positions as long as they're locally funded.
Correct. Cause we're only gonna get-
That's where the issue is, is the state caps how much money we're going to get.
Is that based on population?
I think that's one of the things it's based on, it's based on caseloads, it's based on a lot of different things. And to give you a little bit of perspective, Beth talked earlier that our CPS worker has forty active cases and actually accepted standards are fifteen per caseload. And we have workers who have more than double what they're supposed to be having because it's so intensive. And when it comes to CPS, you're talking about the safety of children at that point in time. And so, if you have forty cases, you have twenty-five, twenty-six working days in a month, you have less than a day to spend on investigations of alleged abuse or neglect.
And we're seeing serious injuries to children.
How many CPS workers do you currently have?
Two.
Two. How many, in the perfect world, with the consideration of population or whatever the state uses, should we have?
They were unclear, cause the other case worker really didn't know how many cases she had. But in order to get to about fifteen, I'd say we need about five.
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 Five is, is our target.
Two vacancies or three vacancies?
Three vacancies.
So, we have three positions we are filling.
Filling.
And that will get you where?
That will, that will make it bearable.
However, what we also have to keep in mind too is, in an ideal world, you don't send a worker out until they're fully trained.
Right.
And that would take a year. So, unless you can attract somebody with those training and experience to come in, you're looking a year down the road before you're up and running fully, like you should be. You know, the worker we talked to this morning, she's just barely been there a year, she has forty cases. How are you going to attract more experienced people? Well, A, you're making a really good place to work.
And we're working on that.
Because while money is great, money isn't everything.
But if it's a horrible work environment, it's not worth the money.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there, is there such a thing, okay, so I know, like nationally, there was a shortage of nurses and they, so the nursing community decided to do contractors, right? They contracted those people as opposed to hiring over, overhead. Is there anything like that in the social ser, I mean, are there contractors who could come in and, and augment your staff until you could get training?
You can hire what we call emergency temporary workers.
Okay.
Which, if you can find one who's maybe willing to come out of retirement, who has switched jobs and is looking to do something short-term, great. The odds of finding that, though, when everybody's looking for it, we evolve all the way back our argument of how much you're gonna pay them to make it worth their time as well. Now, some of the universities, there are five universities in Virginia who participate in a stipend program. Where kids get stipends to take social work courses, they actually take some social services trainings while they're in school. And so, when they come out of school, they've already got some of the trainings under their belt and they have to stay with you for a year or they have to repay the stipend. We have one-
We have one now.
-that came out of Radford University. Back in Ucan, I hired a couple of them out of Radford University. They have a leg up on other new workers, but they're still new workers.
And we're talking about somebody fresh out of college dealing with life situations that they can't even imagine.
Have they, have, is there any thought along the line, since they've opened it up to teachers, to open it up to nurses?
Yeah, it all depends on what the degree is.
So, it doesn't have to be just teaching?
No, it could be anybody.
It can be psychology, it can be sociology, it can be social work, it could be-
Really, unless you make it to like that.
I'm just thinking with concept, there might be a lot of nurses that decide social work is really good.
Yeah.
So, and all depends, you know, a phys ed major, I probably couldn't get qualified in. But I was a history major in college. You know, once I got to doing anything, not much, but it's human services.
That's what we're looking, that's what the state requires.
Right. You told us last time that you were short about eight people total?
On both sides, benefits and-
Is that still true? I mean, I, I noticed only from last week, but-
Yeah. We've got somebody coming on mid-month, a young man who has some experience. He's gonna be in ongoing foster care. So, you know, you, just because somebody has experience, you still have to look at the fit for the job. And some people are very well-suited to CPS investigations and some people are better in the follow-up. So, we have one worker that maybe brings your child, takes your child away from you. Well, then you turn right around and just start to develop a relationship to try to get that child back. Well, the same person doing both those jobs is really tough. So, we try to keep it separate, but we're not able to do that now because we don't have enough people to keep that separate. So, more staff will definitely, when we fill those positions and if people stay. But, you know, both John and I've experienced, somebody shows up and leaves at lunch and you never see them again and you never know why.
The problem is, most people don't know what they're getting into when you start working CPS. You're like, oh, I'm gonna help children, that's great. But then when you start seeing what you see, it's very traumatic.
Especially for these young kids coming out of school.
How many adult protect-
You know, we find them crying underneath their desk. It's that bad some days. It's, it's a hard job.
Your adult protective services, how many do you have?
Right now, we have three. Have a senior worker, she left us, went to another lookout and came back and she does a great job and we have two other workers that are working on adult services.
Is that adequate?
It, I think right now, it's fine. You know, the baby boomers, all of us are getting older and so, there's more people that need our services, but we're able to hold on in APS, we're doing fine in APS. And some people prefer that to working with the children.
What about your foster care? Do you have people overlapping and doing, excuse me, two or do you have people designated for foster care?
Generally, you need to have dedicated staff to foster care because the, the child will, sometimes the only constant in their life is the worker because they often move from placement to placement, especially children with a lot of serious behavior problems. And a lot of kids that are in institutional settings where they have to be because they have mental health issues or danger to themselves or others kinda issues. And so, the worker is the one person, so we try as we may, we try to keep those, you know, people constant so the child has something constant. But, you know, even our foster parents are complaining, you know, I've had four workers and I've been a foster parent a year and I've had four different workers to try to deal with. And it's a personal relationship that you develop with the foster parents, with the birth parents and with the children. And so, the, the more we can keep those consistent, the better it is for everybody.
So, how many people do you have on staff that work just with foster care?
Foster care, two, three?
Three? And that's not adequate, but it's working or?
Well, you have to visit every child every month and they, they're not all in Warren County, so they're, they're driving all over the state to see the kids. And then they have to do foster care plans, they have to go to court, they have to file the stuff with the court. So, there's a lot to it and plus all the documentation, plus they have to go to the FAP team to present the child's needs and, and do all the paperwork that goes with that, which is extensive, so, you know, there's a lot to it.
And they often, from my experience, go pick the child up, bring them to the FAP meeting and take them back.
Yeah.
And ideally, foster care is, the goal is to return the child home. We don't wanna go through adoption. One day, your foster care is traumatic and it's gonna leave an indelible mark on the child. So, your foster care workers aren't only working with the child, they're working with the school, they're working with the course. They have to be working with the parents.
The birth parents also.
To work on whatever issue caused the situation to evolve into foster care in the first place. And that's where the relationship comes in and that's where the trust between the worker and the parents, because the parents really have to know, we're working in their best interests and after you've taken their child from them, how much are they really gonna trust that you're working in their best interest? And so, retaining staff, especially foster care is so vital to the success of children in foster care.
And then we have timelines that we have to meet. You know, the federal, the federal government sets up timelines. So, if you don't have a child back in their home, then you have a certain amount of time to get them a, a permanent, permanent place to live. So, we gotta move quickly to terminate parental rights and, and get that child available for adoption and to look for adoptive homes for those children. So, the, the workers are doing all that work also.
The same foster staff takes care of the adoption issues as well?
Mm-hmm.
So, how many regular office staff? And I don't mean regular in any condescending way, but your administrative assistants or office manager, what do you have? I'm just trying to get an overall of your staffing and-
Okay, in, in the administrative area, there would be the director and then a person that does finances, HR, what else? Every personnel, every, every payroll, the budget, there's one person that does that. Then we have a lady we just hired who's gonna learn that piece too, so we'll have a backup cause if anything happens to Mickey, nobody knows what to do. So, she makes, keeps the motion going. So, we just hired somebody to learn that program and she also does all of our IT support. You know, getting people, she spent two days, well, two weeks trying to get me an email account from the state and get all my security clearances in place so that I could get the information I need. She's been working on John's for over a week and a half just to get him what he needs to do his job. It's all very complicated and slow. So, she's dealing with the phones, she's dealing with email accounts, she's dealing with the computer, the programs that we have from the state to do our job, which are complicated. For months, we've been working with a state program that, that we scan our documents, we have electronic case records, we scan our documents, that hasn't been working for months. And so, people go to do their work and they can't get to the documents they need to. The state's been working on that. So, a lot of, lot of work between the state and that position. And then our community liaison, Michelle Smelter that was here last time and got an award for the work she did with the thermal shelter, she's in the administrative area. And, and we do have an assistant director, so that's the administrative staff. Then on the benefit side, there's two supervisors and about eleven workers. And then on the services side, you've got, and there's no support staff in benefits. They do everything for themselves. And then the services staff has one support person, it's called Human Services Aid. She does a lot of the typing into the system that the workers will dictate and then give them the trans, and she'll do the transcription into the system because every single move they make has to be documented in a system or it is, it hasn't happened. You know, the case records have to be extensive, all the visits have to be documented, all the plans have to be documented, all the quarter parents have to be documented, all your contacts with everybody involved in the case, from the parents, the children, to the foster parents, to doctors, teachers, attorneys, all that has to be documented in the system for both child welfare and adult services. So, they spend an awful lot of time, you know, completing this stuff in those systems. So, there's about, there's about forty-one people all told. And so, we've got eight to nine social workers and then I've got a support staff, so I have receptionists, people that answer the phone. And we get twelve hundred calls a month and we get eight hundred people in the front door. So, the receptionist staff is busy, plus we have online applications that have to be registered and researched and set up in the system, documents. We pull reports from Social Security, from Virginia Employment Commission, from several federal systems.
DCSA.
Yeah, the support enforcement, we, we get all that third-party information so we can verify that against what the client tells us. So, we have independent ways to verify money and Social Security payments, unemployment payments. We have systems that we can check and see if somebody's been working. So, all the, all those reports have to be pulled on every st- So, all those reports have to be pulled on every single individual in the case. And they're all in a different system. So, it's just a lot of stuff that goes along with the job.
Now, with that, do you have much staff turnover with that side?
With benefits, it's the same salary difference between us and the other localities. But it's more, a little more stable than it is on the social work side. Because you don't have that constant tension and constant work and the 40 cases as opposed to 15. The caseloads across the state are much more balanced in the benefit side. So, you don't have that intense stress that you have on the social work side.
The advantages you have in the benefits, there's no degree requirement for that position. And your training time generally would be a lot less.
And you can train people on specific programs. Like, we have workers that deal with nothing but nursing home applications and the people that are in nursing homes. And somebody that deals with disability clients and somebody that deals with women and children that are getting cash payments and we're trying to get them back to work. So, that's a specialized. So, you can, you don't have to train them on every single program for everything because we can specialize to some extent.
There are 27 different kinds of Medicaid out there.
It's a lot. Thank you for what you do.
I have one question, if you will, Mr. Tovin.
Yes, sir.
If you received more increased funding from the county, would that prompt increased funding from the state and the federal? Is that the way that, could you, is that a factor?
It could.
It could?
Because what the state also looks at, or especially what they're starting to look at now, is how much skin in the game does a locality have? And your more successful localities have more of an input from their locality and rely less on the state. So, yeah, you could in turn get more income, dollar for dollar.
And that would be a huge, huge benefit for the county then, wouldn't it?
I spent one day with the staff and I can tell you the impact it would have on them would be tremendous. And a motivated staff is far better for your community. And one of the slides we had showed that social services generates about $62 million worth of economic activity in Warren County alone. Medicaid is the bulk of that. SNAP is another big part of it. And so, the money being spent in the grocery stores and the money being spent in the doctor's offices and the hospitals, all taxable money that comes back to the community. So, the more you invest in your social services, the more successful we are. The mission of Virginia Department of Social Services is to help people triumph over poverty. And so, the more people you get into the workforce and the more people that you have that support for that then become self-sufficient, because that's our goal with everything we do, the more economic viability you get, the stronger your community gets. So, the more, it's like anything else, the more you invest in it, the stronger it becomes and the more return you get back from.
And the better job people can do. They're not overwhelmed. You have a decent-sized caseload and you're not on call every other night and working most of the night and then working again the next day, then you get more quality work, you get more investment, you get more time with the clients, time with the kids, time with the families. It's just all there.
So, you must remind us of this at most time?
No problem.
I have one final question.
Yes, sir.
I know that we're keeping going a lot, but...
That's okay. I'm happy that you're interested.
What, it's a subjective answer. What is your success rate?
It depends on what program you're talking about. If you're talking about SNAP programs, they used to do a thing called SNAP participation rate. And the goal was to get 80% of the people who are eligible for SNAP on SNAP. They really don't follow that anymore, but should.
Are you should be also thinking about how many you're getting off of SNAP?
Yeah, very much so. The VIEW program, the Virginia Initiative for Employment and Education at Work. It used to be called WEF, it's called it anymore. It's TANF, Temporary Assistance for Young Family. Temporary is the goal. By the time you're done with your 24 months, you know, TANF and the work program, you should be more educated, you should be more employable, you should have a, if not a degree, you're going to have a certification in something. And so, yeah, we look at how many people come back through the TANF program. And if you look at the TANF numbers over the years, they've steadily declined ever since they put the work requirement in there. It's because they're getting educated, it's because they're getting trained, it's because they're getting jobs. And then, you know, the old cycle of, it was good enough for grandma, it was good enough for my mom, it's good enough for me, it's good enough for my kids. No, it's not. It's not good enough for you. You deserve more, your kids deserve more, you want more for them. And so, it's the motivating part of what we do. SNAP program now has an employment and training part of it. If you are a single adult with no kids, you have to do a work activity in order to keep your SNAP or you're going to lose your SNAP. And so, the more education we're giving them, the more training we're giving them, the more employable they become. You go from your $9 an hour jobs to your $12, to your $15 and so on. All of us started out minimum wage, it was $3.35. My first job, I made $3.35 an hour.
$2.25.
Hopefully, you don't stay there. Hopefully, you use that experience to get a little better job, use that experience to get a little better job. And so, part of what we do is try to help our clients and our citizens understand that this is the progression that we're looking for and we surround you with supportive services to help you out.
We help pay for daycare, that's the big deal. The problem is, if you have a minimum wage job and you've got kids, you can't pay daycare and work because you can't afford it. You don't get enough hours, you don't get enough pay. So, a lot of those women have to stay home because it's cheaper to stay home than it is to work. So, daycare is one of our biggest supports that we do for the women that are on public assistance so that we can, they can get those years in, that experience in. You know, back in the day when we first started Welfare to Work, I was seeing women who had never seen anybody in their household go to work. They didn't know how to fill out an application, they didn't know how to dress, they didn't know how to behave, they didn't know what punctuality was. But we've come a long way since then. But that was what I was dealing with in the 70s and the 80s when they first started these programs. Now, you know, we get people that have not gotten that generational thinking about public assistance and it's time-limited. The most you can get is 60 months for your entire lifetime. And if you have another child while you're on public assistance, that child is never eligible for benefits. So, they put a lot of things in place to keep it from being just generation after generation.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the time.
We appreciate your interest very much. Ms. Coles, I thought about you yesterday when I was on the river tubing for my very first time ever. And I just want you to know I have bruises in some very unusual places.
Did you come by to the bridge in Bentonville?
Yes, yes, we did.
And you came by my house?
It was exciting with my grandchildren, very exciting.
Well, it was a beautiful weekend to be on it and the river cooperated by getting to a safe level there.
Yes, it did, it was great.
Again, thank you.
You're very welcome.
She's been waiting for so long.
Ms. Tovin, election 2020 preparations. Thank you for waiting, Ms. Tovin.
You're welcome. Bless your heart, I tried, Carol.
It's okay, it's been a long week. It's going to get longer. But you recall in August, you all voted to, we had the minimum standards for cybersecurity that the state, the General Assembly enacted and the state had to write a plan. And part of that plan was us do a self-assessment. And with that, we had the help of Tim Grant and he decided that they didn't have all the resources to put in place to actually meet the standards that were required as the minimum standards. And therefore, it was recommended that we get outsourced to a company that could provide some of the standards that we need to meet. So, you all asked that we invite the company, which is Assura. And it's my pleasure to say that tonight, that their chief executive officer is here with us, Karen Cole. And she's going to kind of explain what their company's going to do for us. Ms. Cole?
I have to tell you, this is like going to the Oscars for me. With the pandemic, I don't think I've been out of the Henrico area in like six months. So, this is very exciting. Thank you all for having me this evening. I'm certainly not going to go through three pages of documentation, but I did want to provide you some background information. Cybersecurity, that's a pretty charged subject, right? And so, what I'd like to talk to you about this evening is really where we are with elections, where we're going and sort of some of the touchpoints into the overall county as a whole. So, with respect to our upcoming election, it is quite a target for threat actors. And over the past several months, we've seen an increase from foreign agents from Russia, China and Iran. And last week, we saw some new actors that we had not seen with Cuba and North Korea and Saudi Arabia. So, those types of attacks on elections, some people think, "Okay, well, that might be for larger localities." No. A hundred years ago, I think, when I started out in cybersecurity, it was very much, you know, the larger targets, right? Now, it's indiscriminate. And so, localities are a rich target, not just from where elections are executed, but the treasure trove of confidential information that is maintained at the locality from all levels of government. So, when working with our clients, we're starting out with election protection because we want to definitely make sure that you all are ready and protected in preparation for this election. That's not to say that you don't already have cybersecurity protections in place. But it's important as board members that you understand that cybersecurity is a moving target. And it's always at the forefront of leadership. Because at the end of the day, cybersecurity is not a technology issue. Cybersecurity is a people issue. Majority of data breaches happen because of human behavior, not because of technology. So, as we start with Carol and her team, we will be working in two different areas. One will be in what we call a technology space where we're going to be taking a look and continuing to lock down the poll books, emails, things like that to make sure that things are shored up before the election. But also, what we call on the governance risk and compliance side, which is that program management piece, right? So, that management of cybersecurity from the election standpoint. However, this is a starting point. And one of the things that I'm excited to see and I think Mr. Daley, as we move forward with this contract, is that this also, he does recognize the importance of cyber and that this becomes an effort that supports everything that you do and it ties to your strategic plans. So, now, as earlier, as you were talking about broadband, right? As you're talking about major initiatives and swapping out systems and new capabilities. Well, cybersecurity is a piece of that. Because in every, in every major technological initiative, there's also people out there that are threatening to take that away. So, there's a balance out there. But we are going to start off with elections. Did want to make sure that we talk about the bigger picture. One of the things as we start, we will be building out a roadmap. And that roadmap will be the one-to-year, the one-to-three-year plan for elections to make sure that not only are we meeting the requirements of the Commonwealth of Virginia, but that it's right size for per department. Because at the end of the day, it does you no good. I could put, you know, my folks can put a beautiful plan in place that will sit there and grow dust and that's not going to be of any value to you. So, the last thing that I'd like to leave you with, and I'll answer any questions that you have, is a couple of different thoughts. One, again, this is not going to be an IT issue and this is going to be an overall people issue. And that starts from the highest form of local government, which means you all. And so, you will see us again and we will bring you a policy and we will talk to you about this. And we will talk to you about the support that we need in moving forward and protecting, not just starting with elections, but any additional threats that may be identified for the county or the school systems or things like that. Because at the end of the day, you all are sharing a significant amount of data and resources. You all deserve to be protected, your citizens and stakeholders deserve to be protected. So, as we move forward, I just personally wanted to come today, one, to first and foremost, thank you for the opportunity for Assura to help you all with this initiative. And it also helps to get out of the greater Richmond area once every six months. So, with that, I just wanted to take a moment. I know that it's been a long day for you all, but to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question. So, when you say that you are not shoring up more the IT, but you're shoring up more of the people, so is that, my understanding is that you are going to put into place protocols and protections that when somebody gets up and leaves their desk, that they make sure that their computer is, you know, back into password mode?
We actually do both. So, yeah, it will be the technology, but it will also be, like you said, those management controls or what we call management controls that are rules about how you operate. And again, we're contracted for elections, but there's many things that we'll be putting in place that can be utilized across the county. But yes, it is a marriage of both technical and management controls.
Okay, so you, are you writing policies like an ISO would do or risk management framework, that kind of? Is that what you're doing?
I'm going to get teary because you're saying, you're saying words that are really good. You're talking about ISO, the International Standards Organization. And, yeah, so the way that the Commonwealth works is the standards that they are pushing down are based upon a complementary framework called the National Institute of Standards and Technology.
NIST.
NIST, 800-53. So, you all will be compliant with that, those controls will be compliant. Part of those are policies and procedures, part of those are supporting plans. One of the first things that we will work on will be what's called a cybersecurity incident response plan. And then with that, you'll have system and you'll have risk assessments. And some of those risks, we're going to come and talk to you about in private session, sorry. You know, but, and you'll make decisions about those. But then also disaster recovery plans, things like that. So, yeah, so it's a number of things. And in fact, that's why I didn't want to bore you all. But if you are interested in what comes with this and what that looks like as far as the plans and programs that are being put in place, how they meet the requirements of House Bill 2178 and then the technology in place, I wanted to provide that to you for reference.
Are you going to be doing certification and accreditation kinds of things? Is that your, are you guys going to be doing CNA?
Yeah, the Department of Elections and in fact, NIST doesn't require that. However, you all as a locality go through an audit annually. And I'm not sure which auditing firm that you use, but generally, many of the ones that operate will take a look at certain cyber controls now as part of their overall comprehensive annual audit. And so, if that's the case, then yes, they will hit some of those NIST-based controls. But it doesn't necessarily mean that you all have to have an annual certification unless you want to go that route. But it's definitely not necessary.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
I just have one, if you will, maybe from Ms. Tovin. But you know, over the years, we've seemed to have gone through some, a lot of different machines, voting machines. Do we have it down now where we're confident that the right vote gets, goes where it's supposed to go? And with the backup of the vote actually going into a machine to be counted? Are we down to the ballot machine now?
Well, we've got a paper trail.
Yeah.
So, the scanner reads the ballot, it's a digital scan and it does a count. So, we always have that paper trail as backup and that's what the people want. So, I would say that I think we're there.
We're finally there, okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Well, I'm not asking computer questions because I am not technology savvy. I bow to her expertise and she will get me there. But as far as your needs, I know Dr. Daley increased your staff, which I'm grateful for, I know you are, but...
It's temporary, but right now, it's still limited, you know, for the needs that we have because they...
It's a little bit limited for the needs we have. We are seeing such historical numbers...
numbers now that we haven't experienced before because of the no-excusing COVID. So we are experiencing numbers that we've not seen in any other election, which is, I'm glad to see people are wanting to vote. But it does take people to implement that, and work that, and get the ballots out, and all that. So, and we'll have some volunteers.
That was my next question.
Officers, yes. Of course, you have to be sworn to do what we do. And so the reason I reach out to our officers, they're already sworn officers, and they, they'll volunteer to come in and help with that.
Okay, that was, that was going to be my question.
When you, when you say you have historical numbers, are those numbers that you're referencing absentee request, absentee ballot request for people who don't want to vote in person?
Yes. And we have like 10 days to come up to speed to make sure we're ready. We are already, we, because it was a lawsuit, we had a ballot change last Thursday. The order came through. We had a ballot change, so I had to go through that whole process again. So it meant delaying our getting our ballots as early as we probably would have, because they, you know, they couldn't start printing until all of that was approved and approved by both the county and the state, not just Warren County, all of the state. So the printers are eagerly, you know, working very hard around the clock to get our ballots to us, which we haven't received yet. But once we do that, then the pressure will be on to get everything done that we need to do, which means a lot of long nights, a long weekend, very long hours, and sometimes not enough people. But we're trying to get there. And of course, they added extra things to, you know, this past year because of the, because of COVID, and the, you know, federal election, and presidential, like the postage on the return envelopes, and those kinds of things, which adds to the workload, because it has to be postmarked. So we had to actually get stamps for that. So there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes, that some of the new laws that have come out, that they don't know how they, how they go about implementing some of the things. So it does create a lot of volume for things that we have to oversee and make sure gets done, and make sure we can implement all those laws that take effect.
How long does it take someone that, if they want to help by volunteering, to get sworn in?
Well, they have to first be appointed by the electoral board, and that's usually a pretty easy process that we can go through. But then they have to do like, they have to do an acceptance letter. We send out letters that they've been appointed. They have to an acceptance letter, then they have to take their oath. And then there's training involved. So we try to do that closer to the election, so that they're, you know, they've got familiar training, and they can, they don't forget it before they actually can, you know, use that training. So.
So if someone wanted to volunteer, they need to get in that process?
Right. And we do have some volunteers coming out, yes, and we're in that process right now. So if you know anyone, certainly send them our way.
Okay.
Additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Tobin.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming.
Do you have to drive back to Henrico tonight?
I do. It's a good thing I have books on tape.
Safe travels to you.
Thank you also. I look forward to talking with you all in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elections, money appropriations. Carol, you're up again.
Well, one of the good things out of some of the, the 2020 election, and of course, unfortunately, COVID, was that there was a grant for, to the HABA Help America Vote for care funds. And we've been, I guess, through the State Board of Elections, they were passing down certain amount of care funds for us to use. So they have given a total of $58,965 to Warren County. Of course, it has to be used, it has to be used for COVID or items for the 2020 federal election. And it has to be expended by December, or it would go back to them, pretty much like some of the other care acts are. But we kind of established general usage of some of the money, what it would go for would be equipment, computers, which we would need, new laptops, and things for the electronic poll books, supplies, postage, and staff. Those are the kind of things that they, they would allow us to use the funds for. One thing that, that we would like to do, though, is even though I specified a certain amount in the early stages, is authorization that if I needed to move the money from one, one area to another, that would be okay. So that's, that's what the CARES Act is about for us. And I guess we're lucky to have some funding coming down from some of the legislation. And of course, with COVID, you know, we have to provide more protective equipment and things like that. And we do do that for our workers.
Mr. Daley, do, do we need to do any action for this appropriation, or just?
Next week.
Next week? Okay.
On your agenda for next week to approve the 58. We've, we've spent a good portion of it with Pitney Bowls already. But the computers, I think they were Windows 7, is that right?
Yeah, I've had Windows 7 computers.
Replacing all of those and getting some things. You'll just approve the appropriation next week.
Thank you.
You took a home loan request?
No. Any questions at all?
I just want to give you any longer.
Thank you all for your support. It's greatly appreciated. And I greatly appreciate you.
Thank you. And you be careful going home tonight, too.
Thank you.
The item number F now would be the discussion on the ordinance to amend and reordain Section 172-2 of Warren County code redesignated private roads in Linden Heights subdivision as highways for law enforcement purposes. Mrs. Jordan?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the Board. So I would ask if we could, my hope today is to clarify some of the questions you had at the last public hearing. I think they were caused by some of the questions that various residents asked. But I would like to start it just looking at what has been proposed to amend the code section, and you should have received it in your packet. So right now, the way code section 172-2 reads is that all the platted roads and streets located in Shenandoah Farms subdivision, as shown on the following Warren County tax map, now apologize, it's paragraph B, it lists various tax map numbers, but then it has 23C sheets 1 through 9. So this ordinance was enacted by the Board of Supervisors back in 1980. And at that time, there was only Shenandoah Farms. Linden Heights subdivision did not exist at that time. So the way our code section currently reads is inaccurate, because it lists all the platted roads for all of the properties on tax map 23C. Well, there is a good portion of properties, I believe it's approximately 94 properties, that have now split off from Shenandoah Farms, and they're the Linden Heights subdivision. So on the next, you should have a map that shows you, it looks like this, the Linden Heights subdivision. And it shows you all the properties that are part of that subdivision, and all the properties there are part of tax map 23C. And all of these properties are listed on Sheets 2 and Sheets 4 of tax map 23C. So the proposed amendment, as if you go back to this page, is to, let me look here, is just to correct the sheets for tax map 23C that are actually Shenandoah Farms, and then to parse out Linden Heights subdivision, and to list tax map 23C Sheets 2 and 4 as Linden Heights subdivision. This will allow enforcement, it is more clear, it's, it's clear to law enforcement about what roads are designated as highways. And so currently, in speaking with the sheriff, who's been here all evening, but has now stepped out, my hope is that he could provide clarification from a law enforcement perspective about what this exactly means. But until he returns, I will, I will try my best to clarify. So what does, what this means is that currently, there are certain code sections within the state code regarding motor vehicles, that they cannot write tickets for for violations if they occur on private roads. So one example he did, he gave me was speeding. Another example was driving like golf carts or ATVs.
Four-wheelers, yep.
That sort of thing. If, if that type of activity is conducted on a private road, then there's nothing he can do. But with these roads, if they are designated as public highways, then he can use, he can write certain tickets depending, and he can enforce speed limits, he can enforce, you know, he can prevent ATVs and that sort of thing driving up the road. So and.
So they're still considered, Caitlin, this is still considered private roads. That doesn't change. It just gives law enforcement the ability to enforce the law.
Exactly. On the, that's the only designation, the only designation is that these private roads are highways for law enforcement purposes. Now, the roads within Linden Heights, I think it's important to note, they are right-of-way. So technically, they are, the public has access to them, because there are 50-foot right, right-of-ways throughout the Linden Heights subdivision. But for the purpose of amending 172-2, it would be just a designation for that purpose. Hopefully, I believe that answers a lot of the questions that were brought. I will be glad to answer any additional questions you have, and provide further clarification if I can.
I understood that, because I heard the same thing, I think it was last year, when I was sitting out there at a meeting, that it had to be, I want to say it was in Shenandoah Farms, or Shandor Shores, one of those areas where they did the same thing. And it was articulated as to what it meant. I couldn't articulate it last time to save me, but there were so many people out there that are not there tonight, and hopefully, they will look at this and understand it better, that we're seeing it as government overreach. And the reason I asked for it to be clarified better was because of that. And I'm not sure that it really is going to make a lot of difference to them, but I felt like we needed to, to make the effort to make it more clear to them.
Right. I do think it's a mischaracterization to say it provides for government overreach, because law enforcement, even on private roads, if they get called, they can go out there.
Right.
What it is going to provide is it is going to provide law enforcement, I guess, get them more tools in their tool belt, depending on the circumstance, the circumstances. So, you know, if there's an issue with an ATV driver flying up and down the road, then law enforcement can actually enforce.
Enforce highway laws.
Enforce highway laws for the benefit of safety, to provide additional safety for the residents.
There we go. You're up. As it stands, on private property, the only thing that we can really enforce is reckless driving, DUI, driving under influence of drugs, or so forth, or any misdemeanor, class one misdemeanor, or felony charges. We can't really enforce 462, which is the traffic laws. We get called constantly up in that area, and throughout the county, ATVs, golf carts, dirt bikes, driving and riding recklessly on these roads. If they are not, if they are private property, no different than Mary Shady Land and some others, not a single thing we can do about it, especially if we didn't see it. So if we see it, then we can enforce it, obviously. What a lot of people fail to understand is they have, everybody in this county has the same authority as I have. They can walk right to a magistrate, swear out a warrant, and so forth. So really and truly, it doesn't do a lot of government oversight. It really just helps the communities, because we're still patrolling. We have sectors, we're enforcing our sectors. And obviously, as we can see it, our sheriff's deputies are all over the county. And they are visible more so than ever. And they're going to be more so than ever, as we continue moving forward towards our other things. But could it help us? Could, but it also could help the communities. We could actually, for the speeding and the racing, we could actually set up speed traps, DMV grants, and so on and so forth, to help enforce the reckless driving and the erratic behavior on our roadways. Any questions for me or no?
I have a couple.
I'm coming out.
So, so if the homeowners association put up a speed limit, you cannot enforce that, is that correct?
Correct.
But if they were driving recklessly, you could enforce that?
Correct. If, the only signs that really that we can enforce, they have to be county or state-approved signs.
Right.
So private property areas, we can't enforce that stuff.
So improper driving, you could, you could enforce that?
Correct. I'd love to put a 15 mile an hour speed limit on my road, but I wouldn't be able to enforce it. And, you know, if you really look at reckless driving, there's a lot of factors that go involved with reckless driving, you know, more than just the, the person driving the car is in danger, you know, surrounding bystanders' property, or so forth. So it, it's, it's hard to charge a kid unless you actually witness it.
So if someone was driving intoxicated, you could enforce that?
Correct.
You can do that on private property anyway.
What's that?
You can do that without those.
Correct. And that, and that's what I was, that's really the only difference. The only difference is that we could enforce four-wheelers and ATVs and so forth. I'm keep my personal opinion to myself, because I lost that when I got elected. But, you know, I, I think there's reason some of us move out here, and it's to get out of the city life. But our, the way we enforce laws in Warren County is not going to change by making it this a sanitary district, not a sanitary district. It's just not. We're still going to enforce and try to protect every individual in this county to the best of our ability.
Would one advantage be if, say, I was driving recklessly and ran into your fence, tore it up?
That is a difference now. That's, that's where it does come in a little different. I apologize for that. If it happens on private property, you have an accident. Our deputies are, the only thing we're going to do is come up and say, hey, exchange information, get insurance, help you out, maybe even write a report on it. Typically, we don't need to. But if you, I don't know if you've noticed, but our sheriff's office now does a lot more accidents, responds to more accidents in the county instead of calling the state police. That way, we can provide a faster and better service for our residents. There's an accident you call, and it is on our highways, then if our 300s done, has to be turned over to the state if it's over $1,500 damage, and then it actually gets reported. But if it was private property, two people hit on Mary Shady Lane, which is private property, exchange information and go on unless there was reckless driving involved, or DUI. That's basically the difference between it all.
Thank you.
It would provide a better service for the people, I think. But, you know, it depends which way you're looking at it. Thank you.
But I would say, whether you want to include the language regarding Linden Heights, the way our code section currently is written is incorrect. And so I would say we would at least need to clarify the properties that are in Shenandoah Farms, just since this issue is before the board, now's the time to, to make that correction, just to indicate that they're, to acknowledge that Linden Heights has been separated from Shenandoah Farms. Does the board have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion to adjourn. I'll second it.
Go in favor.
Aye.
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 We adjourn.